All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Napa County Facilities Master Plan Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Really, really happy that you guys are taking the time to meet with us today and excited to hear your feedback. My name is Eric Wong. I'm with Gensler, which is the firm that the county is working with to prepare this master plan. And to kick us off, we'll have some opening remarks from Steve Letterer, who's the Director of Public Works at the county. But before we dive into that, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Yvette Diaz. Yvette?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is Yvette Diaz, and as Eric mentioned, we are with Gensler Consulting Firm, working with the county on this project. And I will be first walking you through just some of our listening options here. So if you're listening now in English and English is your preferred language, you don't need to do anything. But for those of you who would like to listen in Spanish, in a moment, we will activate the interpretation. You can go ahead and select Spanish at the bottom of your Zoom window. And you will be then hearing me. So I will be speaking throughout this presentation in Spanish on that channel, and Eric will speak in English. So I am going to translate this now to Spanish, and then we are going to activate the translation. Buenas noches a todos. Gracias por venir. Bienvenidos al Town Hall, a la junta virtual del ayuntamiento. Queremos dejarles saber que yo voy a estar traduciendo todo en el, en, de español, en, en inglés, perdón, de inglés español. Y para que puedan escuchar en español a los que quieran cambiar de canal, en un momento, mi colega Eric les va a activar la traducción, y pueden hacer clic donde dice español en su ventana de Zoom debajo. Okay? So with that, we're gonna move on to our respective channels. Thank you.
Hey, so I think I'll take it from here. My name is Steve Letterer. I'm the county's Public Works Director. I want to thank everybody for for coming tonight. We'll get into a lot more details later, but I'll just say that every decade or so, sometimes every couple of decades, the county comes to a point where it's time to take a good look at our facilities and make decisions for the future. That happened in 1978, when the current administration building was built on the site we're on. It happened in 2013, when we decided to move our Health and Human Services campus down from Old Sonoma Road down to South Campus. Happened in 2015 or so, when we chose the site that we're building our replacement jail on. And that time has, has come again for a lot of reasons that we'll be talking about later. We are early on in the process, looking at things really from a 50,000-foot view. But it's very important that we feel to, to get the public's input from as early as possible, so that we have the, the benefit of that input. So that's what we're doing here tonight. And again, there are going to be a lot more details coming up. I will say that we're nowhere near designing buildings or talking about colors, or, or even necessarily deciding exactly where every department is going to be. This is a, we're still at a very big picture level here. And there'll be opportunity for questions and answers at the end. So with that, I will turn it over to the Gensler team. And again, thank you everyone for being here.
Great. Thank you, Steve. So to start off, we wanted to go through kind of the purpose of tonight's session, so that everybody has a better sense of what to expect. So first and foremost, we want to, you know, update everybody on the project, what it is, our process, and where we are in that process. The second major thing is to, to get your feedback, as Steve mentioned. Up to this point, we've been working on data collection and, and also developing, you know, potential options, preliminary options, which we'll be presenting back to you. And we definitely want your feedback on that to help us, you know, refine those options and hopefully arrive at a singular preferred option. Related to that, we'll also be going through some key findings and opportunities that came out of our data collection activities. And then finally, we, you know, just at a very general level, we want to understand your priorities and how the county can, you know, can make an impact with respect to those in the facilities. Now, just to run through kind of the major parts of our program tonight. So we'll start with the project overview to get everybody up to speed. And then look, take a look at the existing conditions, key findings and opportunities. We'll pause briefly after that part of the presentation to get your feedback. And I'll explain in a little bit how we're going to do that. Following that, we'll be looking at the preliminary options, like I said, stopping again for feedback. And then finally, at the end, we'll be doing, you know, Q and A session, trying to answer as many questions as possible. And then finally, we'll wrap it up with next steps. All right. Now, as far as how attendees can participate in this meeting, there's three main ways. First, you can ask questions using the Q and A function. There should be a button at the bottom of your window that says Q and A. That will submit questions to us, which we'll be able to see. And then, you know, like I said, we will try to get through as many of those as possible at the end. We'll also have polls at those kind of feedback points that I pointed out in the agenda just now. And then finally, it's also possible for everybody to, you know, just to chat with each other using Zoom Chat. Just keep in mind, whatever gets put into the chat is visible to everyone. That includes us, presenters, as well as all the attendees. And just a few reminders, please make sure you put any questions you have into the Q and A. We won't be monitoring the chat for questions. So if it's a question you'd like us to answer, us meaning either Gensler or somebody from the county, please drop it into the Q and A. And of course, please be respectful of your questions, as well as in the chat. And given that the chat will be visible to everybody, please refrain from posting any sensitive or personal information. And finally, this meeting is going to be recorded. And that recording will be posted following the conclusion of this meeting. All right. So let's start off with a little bit of an icebreaker activity, so that people can get used to this polling function. So in, in a second, I'm going to, you're going to see a window pop up that allows you to basically answer this question. So let's just do that right now. And, you know, just to kind of get a sense of where people are calling in from, if just let us know which of these, which of these options is closest to where you are, or if none of them work, then you can always select other. Give everyone a few seconds to do that. And while you're doing that, I just want to mention, you know, there may be points throughout the presentation where you'll see me pausing, and that will be because we're trying to stay in sync with Yvette. And so, yeah, if there were some silences up ahead, that's fine. All right. Looks like we have pretty good participation rates. I'm actually going to cut this off now. Let's see. So it looks like the vast majority of people who are on this call are calling in from Ciudad Napa, sprinkling coming from St. Helena and American Canyon, and then a few others in the other category. So, great. That's, oops, there we go. All right. So let's jump into the project overview. So this is really the first phase of the county's planning process, and we're focusing on a more limited subset of buildings. So not looking at the entire portfolio, but focusing on three main areas. The first of which is up, or northernmost area would be a standalone building at 650 Imperial Way. That's part of a, you know, larger business park there. And then just south of that is the downtown campus, which includes three buildings, 1127 First Street, which maybe you may know as the old Cruthers Building, the main county administration building, and then the Hall of Justice, which is immediately adjacent to that. And then finally, we're also, the third area we're looking at is what the county refers to as their South Campus. And specifically looking at Building Four. So there are actually a, a few other buildings that are there, but were not included as part of this phase of study. So just focusing on Building Four and South Campus. All right. Now, as far as project drivers, you know, like, like Stephen was saying, it's been about a decade since the county has kind of taken a step back and tried to take a long view of their facilities. So as far as drivers, you're going to see a lot of these have to do with just taking or improving kind of the functioning and service delivery of, of county departments. So service delivery, meaning how county, different county departments interact with the public, and also how easy it is for members of the public to access those services. Modernization is another major driver. You know, the county's portfolio of buildings is, is generally old and of varying quality. So it's, it was something we found, you know, in our interaction with the county, is that there's a desire to get them kind of up to speed, so that we have facilities that, you know, people are proud to work at, and that, you know, that residents are proud to have. Environmental impact, more specifically identifying ways in which both county can leverage its facilities to reduce its environmental impact. Ranges from everything, from reducing car trips to, to developing more sustainable buildings. Prioritize needs. So, you know, as you might imagine, with the portfolio of buildings that's quite old, there's a lot of things that need to be replaced or, or repaired. This is an opportunity to kind of look at, look at all of those needs in a more kind of holistic framework that outlines clear priorities for what should be invested in first. Downtown presence is another big one. Obviously, the county has a pretty prominent spot in downtown Napa. And to the extent that they can make a positive impact on that environment, you know, that's something that they want to do. And then finally, fiscal responsibility, making the most with the resources that the county has, and ensuring that whatever investments the county does make are directed towards things that, you know, support a more holistic vision for how the county, how the county's facilities will be. So. And then just a quick overview of where we are in our overall process. So right now, in the red box, we're under the options development phase. Prior to this, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of our time is just spent in data collection and also engaging stakeholders within the county. All of that has gotten rolled up into these findings and our preliminary options, which will be the focus of tonight's presentation. And following this, we will be taking your feedback, feedback we've gotten from the county, and eventually rolling that into some final recommendation to the board, which we will be presenting to them at some point early next year. After which, we can wrap up our report, as well as provide an implementation guide that outlines kind of the major steps for getting to the finish line. So existing conditions and key findings. Just to give, remind everybody, we're looking at three different areas here. And so in downtown, we have 1127 First Street, the Adam Building, and Hall of Justice, which you'll often see abbreviated as H O J. South Campus, we're looking at Building Four, and then 650 Imperial. You'll see that the bulk of, you know, the departments that we're working with are currently situated within downtown, and then within Building Four, it's actually, the building's primarily empty, except for some storage space, as well as a subset of I T S books, that's information technology. And then 650 Imperial is home to, is kind of the main hub for I T S, as well as Health and Human Services Agency, specifically their, their center for older adults. All right. So moving on to the key findings. The first is about security and access control. So, you know, generally, things have been, have been added in an ad hoc way, which has resulted in kind of a wide range of different solutions and different look and feel, depending on which department or which building we're in. You know, the opportunity here is really to take a look at the county's security needs and and apply more even standards that hopefully strike a better balance between security and a sense of welcome and openness, which a lot of department leaders have said that they want to, you know, pursue. And then next, we have, we did an assessment of the real estate market to understand what kind of redevelopment potential there could be, or what kind of potential there could be to sell the county's downtown properties, focusing mostly on 1127 First Street and potentially 650 Imperial. Reason being, 1127 First is, you know, that, that building is probably one of the poorest conditions of the ones we evaluated. And, you know, the county has simply outgrown it, and it's also disconnected from their H O J and Adam Building. So that was a, that was a logical building to dispose of. However, what we found is that, you know, given current market conditions, there just isn't a whole lot of redevelopment potential right now. So anything that, you know, involves the county selling or redeveloping their property will probably have to be timed a bit later when market conditions are more favorable. And with respect to public facing functions, so right now, depending on, you know, what it is you need to do, if, if you need to, if you need to interact with multiple apartments, more often than not, you're having to go across multiple buildings or multiple floors, each with, you know, and each department has their own kind of check-in sequence or different type of counter. You know, resulting in a less than stellar, you know, customer experience. So, you know, we saw an opportunity here to find ways to streamline that and potentially bundle together some of the county's most used services into some sort of one-stop model that will reduce the amount of back and forth that people will have to do to interface with the county. And then with this, we, this finding is about the fact that currently downtown, you know, most of their space is dedicated to administrative functions. There are some departments that have some degree of public facing functions, but what's left out are social services. So mainly services that are offered by Health, the Health and Human Services Agency, which, as I mentioned earlier, is, is situated in South Campus. However, a lot of the populations that they serve, you know, this is downtown would be a more accessible place for them. So that's something that we're looking at potentially addressing. And finally, moving on to opportunities. So the findings that we went over, that's kind of what we found through our data collection activities. These opportunities that we're going to present now are kind of, you know, big ideas that we could potentially implement as part of this master plan in response to those findings. All right, good. So I alluded to this earlier, but basically creating, adopting a one-stop model for the county's most frequented, you know, public facing functions in, that would all occur in one building, and preferably organize in a way so that somebody coming in doesn't necessarily need to, you know, check in multiple places. They're actually just going to one place where people, where they can then be connected to the people they need to talk to. We've outlined some of the departments that, you know, based on the research and the data that we collected, departments that we think could benefit from being connected to a multi-service center like this. And on the bottom, you see an image of, you know, a real-life example of, of this in Alameda County, where they have, you know, a multitude of services available. And, you know, laid out in a way that makes it easy for visitors to navigate and reduce the amount of trips that people have to take. There's also, you know, I mentioned that the county is interested in, in being a good neighbor, and to the extent that they can, making a positive impact to downtown Napa, if they stay in downtown Napa. And you know, from right now, the, the way that the buildings that they have need to restreat are are generally kind of, you know, guarded and not in a, not integrated very well with the urban topic around it. So the example that you see here are just approaches that, you know, different public agencies in California have taken to, you know, introducing a bit more transparency, transparency in connection to the areas surrounding it, and also, in some cases, offering community-oriented space, literal, you know, space that, you know, meeting space or other types of spaces that the community can use. And then finally, you know, for mobility, we recognize, and the county recognizes that mobility patterns are changing, and that any kind of forward-looking plan needs to, you know, be cognizant of that. So, you know, we understand very, like, public transit is an option, albeit limited. Ride share, which includes Uber and Lyft and those types of services, personal vehicles and bikes. Right now, the way that things are set up, it's generally oriented towards, you know, making it easy for people to drive up and park. But looking ahead, we want to make sure that we, you know, we're cognizant and acknowledging these other forms of arriving at county facilities. All right. So on to our next poll. And I'm just going to run through the, the questions one by one here. Sorry, just give me one second. Go. Let's see, all three questions pop up at once. The first question is, which county departments do you typically interact with? You're welcome to select all of that apply. Second question is how you typically access those departments? And you can select multiple ones here, too. Then finally, how do you actually get to county facilities when you do need to visit them? Just give everyone a few more moments. So there's still a few more coming in. One second. All right. I think we can probably cut it off there. Let's see, look at the results. So the first question looks like planning and accessory recorder and county clerk and treasurer, tax collector are the top three, which is not surprising, that aligns with what we've been hearing from county staff. And that's followed somewhat closely by public works and then fire. Good. As far as how people typically access those departments, it seems like in-person interactions are still the most Good. As far as how people typically access those departments, it seems like in-person interactions are still the most prevalent. Uh, sixty-seven percent of you said that you interact in person. That's followed by over the phone, and then online, and then by mail. Um, and not surprising, how do people typically get to county facilities? Um, vast majority is by personal car, with just a couple of people. Um, literally a couple of people saying either bicycle or other. Alright. So, um, we're gonna move on to our overview of the preliminary options. So, you know, these options are meant to lay out, um, you know, a range of potential possibilities. That take different, that demonstrate different approaches to, um, you know, to addressing the findings that we've discussed, um, the related issues. Um, and as well as implementing some of the opportunities um that we just presented. So. The first option um is what we're calling the new Sullivan Building. So there's a parking lot that's currently across the street from the um administration building. Um, you know, that the county refers to as the Sullivan Lot. The idea here would be, um, a new building gets built on that um on that site. Um, to accommodate. Um, county functions and future growth. With renewed Hall of Justice, we, rather than build a new building, we retain the existing Hall of Justice. And uh convert that into office use. Um, and then there are two South Campus options. One is full consolidation, essentially moving everybody over to South Campus. Partial, which is making, you know, fitting up who we can into building four, um and then leaving the rest in downtown. And then finally, option five. Um, is maintaining the status quo, which means just keeping everybody um where they are currently and. Uh, making repairs and replacements on a needed basis. So, we're gonna go into a little bit more detail about each of these. Um, and explain kind of the major actions associated with each. As well as, um, you know, what potential impacts it can have um to you. So. Um, like I said, with the option one, new Sullivan Building, so this is the the blue shape right here is. Um, is where the new, potential new Sullivan Building would be. Um, taking the place of the surface parking lot. So that's a new build, that's in blue. The admin building, we would be retaining, um. And but performing a gut renovation on that uh from top to bottom. Hall of Justice in this, in this scenario does not get retained, that gets demolished, um, because it's. You know, most of the building systems are already past their useful life, and the buildings are in poor condition, generally require a lot of money to. Um, you know, to continue to maintain. And then finally, with eleven twenty seven first street. Um, with the new space that we have available, new building, we could vacate that and then sell it. Um, building four gets um, H H S A's um. Center for um, uh older adults, and then six fifty Imperial, we vacate and dispose that. Um, so. This slide just summarizes some of the key action, the location impacts that we just talked about. As far as key outcomes, so with the additional space that we have in um. The new Sullivan Building, we're able to carve out a little bit for what we're calling a satellite location for Health and Human Services. Um, reason being that apparently, you know, everything is at South Campus, like I mentioned, um which can be difficult to access for some. Um, and the idea here is that with the satellite location. You know, we couldn't be improving um access to some of their services for certain populations. Um. Otherwise, most public-facing functions would be staying downtown. Um, but generally, with the new building, we're able to kind of implement. These new ideas and hopefully improve accessibility and the customer experience um of their services. Um. Alright. Option two, renewed Hall of Justice. Um. So with this one, there is no new building. Um, we do a gut renovation of the admin building as well as. The Hall of Justice. And just for a little bit more context. Um, the, what we're calling the Hall of Justice complex includes both kind of the original building plus um. Uh jail annex, which is kind of that um upside-down Y shape that you see jutting out from the building. Um. This option would call for full top-to-bottom uh renovation and conversion of that space, including the the former jail space. Um, into, you know, some sort of typical office space. And then eleven twenty seven first street is disposed of here as well. Um, building four, um similar to the previous option, gets refreshed and um. Yeah, and we introduce H H S A to consolidate all of them there. Sorry, consolidate all of them there, and then six fifty Imperial um is uh is vacated and disposed. Um, and again, with our summary, so with this, we're able to keep the criminal justice functions, you know, remaining close to the court. Um, that includes district attorney and public defender. Um, and. Uh, similar to option one, we also would have space here to have a satellite, satellite location for H H S A. Um, and generally, we keep every, you know, most public-facing functions uh consolidated downtown. Um, now, option three, South Campus Full Consolidation. So this would be a drastic move. Uh, we'd be fully uh getting out of all of the buildings that are downtown. Um. There, we're assuming that eleven twenty seven first street and admin building would be sold, um and H R J is still marked for demolition. Mainly because, like I said earlier, the building is very poor condition and is unlikely to be sold as is. Um. Now, with South Campus, um, moving everybody there would easily fill up building four after it's. Uh, converted into office space, which is why you see this new uh hypothetical new building five. Um, which we've been, you know, assuming could occupy this area of the lot right here, um adjacent to Napa Valley Corporate Drive. Um, and this would become the new hub for um the county, um essentially, all of their. Uh departments, all of their operations would be on this one campus. So. Think a few things that um we'll wanna call out here is that, you know. This would mean the county exits the city of Napa or downtown Napa completely, um, which. Um, you know, which would open up those, which would free up those properties for other uses than ones that they currently own and occupy. Um, but it also means that everyone or anything that you would have to access uh within the county, you would have to go to South Campus for, which. Um, you know, may not be as convenient for some folks. And um it also removes the adjacency between criminal justice functions and the court. Uh, option four, South Campus Partial Consolidation. So with this, um, we. Get rid of H R J. Uh, we assume a gut renovation of the admin building. Um, and uh we vacate eleven twenty seven first street. Now with building four, we've um. That is marked for gut renovation. The departments that you see here are just, you know. Potential locations for these departments purely based off of our assessment of, you know, adjacencies that make sense. Plus the amount of space that they need. Um, so, you know, given, given that uh total amount of space, this is how. Um, it seems to make the most sense to split them up, although we would need to retain six fifty Imperial in this uh option simply because there just wouldn't be enough space between. The renovated admin building and building four to accommodate everybody. Um, and I see Elizabeth McKinnon, you raised your hand. If you could actually just drop your question. Um, in Q and A, uh, we can get to that towards the end. Let's move on. Um, so with this, this is kind of like, um, a hybrid between some of the other options that we saw. Uh, we're able to keep the criminal justice functions close to the court, um while carving out a little bit of space for a satellite location for H H S A. Um, but most of the other public-facing functions will be moving to South Campus under this option. Um, and then the ones that remain are actually kind of just their uh county's central administrative function. So that includes things like. Of course, like office space before supervisors, um, and county council and the like. And then finally, maintains status quo, the most exciting one, um where we just assume that everybody stays where they are. Um, and the county will need to, um, you know, refresh each of these buildings on an adequate basis. Um, which, in the short run, um means that, you know, the county is avoiding any kind of major capital outlay, but. Um, like I said, the building, these, all these buildings need a substantial amount of investment if we're gonna try to extend the life of it. Um, for anything more than ten years. Um, and, you know, generally. The cost of operations and maintenance for um buildings of such advanced age are typically gonna be more than you would be experiencing with a um. With a newer building. So, over the long term, it's less clear how much, um, you know, whether that would be a very. You know, good decision from a fiscal uh responsibility perspective. Alright. Um, and here we have a, we're just laying out all five options that we just discussed. We're still in the process of refining these options, so we don't have detailed cost estimates, but we have been working with a cost estimator to. At the very least, understand, you know, costs relative to one another, which is why you see these dollar signs here. Um, and we also have kind of just very early suggestion of what an implementation timeline could be for those uh for each of these options. So you'll see here the, you know, by for the most expensive, I mean, let me back up for a second. All of these options are gonna be very expensive, but the most expensive of all would be developing a, creating a new building on the Sullivan Lot. Um, you know, that would involve the most amount of new construction. Um, renewed H O J um is, you know, somewhere in the middle. Uh, we're avoiding new construction, but you would have to be spending a pretty significant amount of money um on H R J. The South Campus full um. Uh, option is, you know, not too far off from the new Sullivan Building. You're essentially building um same, almost the same amount of space. Albeit at South Campus, which is a greenfield site, um and also, um. You know, generally, in in that area, we don't have to go up as high, so might be slightly um less expensive. And then options four and five are are relatively close to one another. Those are the, you know, least expensive of the bunch because you're just. Um, not doing as much within this kind of implementation timeline, but like I said, with. Option five, while it's, the capital outlay is minimized, you know, upfront, the ongoing cost to maintain and operate it would likely be higher amongst all the options. Alright. Um, so now we have the a final set of questions um that we would like. To get your feedback on. These are actually open response, so the. Um, the poll window that you'll see popping up, um. Allows you to type in a short response, I think it's up to two hundred fifty characters. Um, we won't be running through all of the responses here for the sake of time. Um. But once people have had a chance to answer them, um we will be documenting, conveying all these responses. And integrating that, um, you know, this feedback into our refinement of the options. So, the questions starting from the top. They're, um, you know, looking to get your thoughts on how, um or if consolidating. Um, the county downtown, um county's functions downtown would have a positive impact. Um. Question about Health and Human Services and understanding if there's really a desire or need for a satellite location. Um. Thoughts on if the county were to split its operations between downtown Napa and South Campus? And then finally. Thoughts on moving the campus, or sorry, thoughts on moving county's operations entirely to South Campus? So I'm gonna leave this poll open for people to um noodle on their responses. Uh. But I think we can probably move on to the Q and A and start hitting some of the questions there that. Okay. So, let me. I'm gonna wait for that to finish speaking, and then we're gonna turn off interpretation. I'll be on the same channel. All good? Alright. And we're back together.
Now we're all together.
Um, alright, so let's take a look at some of the questions we got in the Q and A.
Algunas de las preguntas del Q and A.
Okay, so we have a question about um how the meeting was advertised to the public. Um, Becky, did you wanna take that one? Or Steve?
Yes, I can take that question, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. The um, press that was done on this was done through. Um, not only a press release, but we posted on social media, we shared it in the supervisors' newsletters that go out to the constituents. And we have promoted it on our website. So hopefully, those avenues are getting to various constituencies and interest groups and the resident population. We also, I believe, are collecting email addresses from those who participate tonight, so we can continue to send you. Messages as we move forward with any future communications regarding this project directly, in addition to continuing to post. On the various media resources we have.
Les traduzco, la pregunta es que, de qué, con qué tipo de medios se anunció este seminario, este town hall? Ah, y nuestra querida Becky del condado nos está explicando que se anunció a través de los diferentes medios que utiliza el condado, que tiene que ver con los canales de. De eh, social media, de eh, online, y también con eh. Varios otros eh formas de percadeo que se hicieron. Y además eh si tienen email y quieren saber más información. Acerca de los próximos pasos, por favor, no dejen de ponerlo acá en el chat para que puedan seguir recibiendo esa información.
Great. Thanks, Yvette and Becky. So, let's see. Uh, next question. Uh, we do not have any Napa County Public Service up valley. Would you consider using the Calistoga Fairgrounds that we already own as a substation for sheriff? Fire, roads, et cetera. All services are in Napa. Um. I think that that's a question for Steve.
Yeah, I will take that.
I agree.
And I'll, I'll also take the question uh right before that, that we skipped. The question was, at the time. Of maximum attendance to this webinar, how many members of the community were logged on? The answer is about thirty to that question. So, Yvette, you want me to wait?
Yeah, let me translate the first one. Eh, voy a traducir primero una pregunta eh que decía eh en el tiempo donde. Teníamos la mayoría de personas en este seminario, cuántas personas teníamos? Y Steven nos dice que más aproximadamente treinta. You can go ahead, Steve.
Very good. So the, the next question about the Calistoga Fairgrounds, as many people may know. Um, the county is in the process of um selling the fairgrounds to the city of Calistoga. Currently, it is not a done deal, but it it's uh, it seems to be fairly close. So the fairgrounds may not be in our possession here, um. In the, in the near future. There are a number of county services that are offered up valley, health and human. Health and Human Services provides some services, um, um, out of the city of Calistoga. The Fire Department, of course, is very mobile. They have stations in many places. Uh, Rhodes has a yard, um, in Yountville as well as, uh, uh, that we use, uh, also sometimes in Calistoga. So, um, so at, at this point, um, probably not the fairgrounds. Um, if at some point in the future, for instance, the city of Calistoga or one of the other cities was developing some complex where it might make sense for the county to join in, there's always that, that possibility. So, um, that's pretty much where we are right now.
Okay. Eh, thank you, Steve. So, eh, la, esta pregunta, eh, tiene que ver, dice que, eh, actualmente no hay ningún servicio de, para el público, eh, del condado en Up Valley, en, en la, la, de Up Valley. Y la pregunta es si se, si consideraría, consideraría el condado utilizar el recinto ferial de Calistoga para, eh, cosas como la estación de bomberos, sheriff, carreteras, et cetera. Actualmente, eh, nos dice Steven que no el, el recinto ferial en sí, eh, pero que si Calistoga o alguna otra ciudad tendría algún, alguna instalación donde se pudieran, eh, ob-, obtener servicios del condados, que sería algo para conversar.
Great, thank you, Yvette. Um, so the next question is, uh, from Catherine George, and Catherine's question is, uh, please consider including a center for the arts. Will there be space for any community use such as this? And she's providing an example, um, which is the Richmond Arts Center. Which is, uh, I'm actually not sure, maybe that, let's see. Uh, which is in Richmond, California. Um, Steve, you want to take this one?
Sure. Um, the answer is it's possible. Um, one sort of architectural concept that I've had in my head, doesn't mean that the, the board will have it in their head, um, but that the, the first floor of any building that we build, um, or renovate, um, would have our board chambers in it, um, and then also have community meeting space on that first floor, essentially being, dedicating that first floor to public uses. Um, so like I said, that would include the board chambers, but it also could include community meeting rooms. It may, um, also include, um, room for, um, uh, for other nonprofits. Um, ultimately, it comes down to space and space comes down to money. And, um, you know, that'll be something that'll be batted about, um, by the board. Um, I will say a couple of supervisors have brought that up as a good idea. Um, but it's just something that will have to play out.
Thank you, Steven. Um, pues la pregunta fue si el condado consideraría, consideraría incluir un centro para las artes, donde hay espacio para la comunidad y, eh, la pregunta, el participante incluyó un link al, eh, Richmond Art Center, al Centro de Arte de Richmond. Y, eh, la respuesta del condado es que, o sea, no sabemos, no es sí o no, nos gustaría, al condado le encantaría, eh, tener algún centro no solo para las artes sino para la comunidad. Um, todo depende realmente de, de, más bien que todo de espacio y si el condado tiene espacio suficiente para esto. Pero por eso queremos saber, queríamos saber sus, eh, cuáles son las cosas que son importantes para ustedes para que el condado las pueda considerar. Gracias.
Wonderful. Uh, Steve, on to, actually, so there's a follow-up question to the one previously, Steve, about, uh, services up valley, um, from Cameron Gangman. Um, Cameron says, can you name, can you name a fire station building owned by Napa County Up Valley? Not quite sure.
There, I'm, I'm not muted. Yeah, there are a number of volunteer stations, um, um, throughout the county, um, Angwin, Dry, uh, Dry Creek. Um, of course, Cal Fire is the county's contracted, um, uh, fire service. They have, um, their headquarters at, on, uh, Big Tree Road north of St. Helena. Um, so, there you go.
Y acá la pregunta fue, eh, siguiendo la pregunta de Up Valley, eh, alguien preguntó si hay algunas estaciones, eh, de bomberos que se encuentren, que sean de Napa, del condado de Napa, eh, en Up Valley. Y antes de yo seguir, voy a preguntarle otra cosita a Steve porque acabo de ver que, uh, eh, preguntar, Steve, there's a follow-up question that, uh, those are not owned by Napa County? Are they owned by Napa County? I think that's the, the question specifically.
Well, the question was really where we provide services from. I don't know that it's particularly relevant, whether we own the property or not, um.
Yeah, okay. Eh, pues la respuesta es, eh, más bien acerca de, um, donde se encuentran estos edificios en el Up Valley. Okay, next.
All right, next, um, comment or question is from John Salmon, and John writes, "You are describing a very narrow and myopic process focused only on the near-term needs of the county. Almost 60% of Napa County residents reside in the city of Napa and are constituents of the county. The county districts are so configured that every county supervisor represents a portion of the city of Napa. The city and the county control almost half of the public land in downtown Napa. Why don't the city and county form a joint powers authority to prepare a long-term strategy for the facilities needs of both joint, when possible, parentheses, and the surplusing of the properties for new rental and for sale housing development?"
So, um, I can take that one. Um, we have had a number, I say we, the Board of Supervisors and staff has had a number of conversations with city council and city staff. Um, and as part of this round, um, the city and county were not, um, uh, able to find, uh, uh, a, a mutual need that would work for both of us, um, at this station. Um, that being said, um, there was a lot of discussion about wanting to partner on a number of future, um, possibilities, including, uh, what happens i- if we end up disposing of 1127 first, what might happen with that? Um, if we end up, um, demolishing the Hall of Justice, um, that would be a space, um, but again, discussions, what might happen with that? If we end up not using the Sullivan block, uh, what might happen with that? So the county's need right now in terms of, uh, solving our office-based dilemmas is a fair, fairly narrow, need. Um, like I said, we discussed it with the city, didn't, didn't really find, um, a common avenue on that, um, but both have agreed to, uh, continue discussing, uh, future opportunities.
Thank you, Steven.
Oh, no, no, please, but, uh,
Oh, okay. Uh, la pregunta fue, eh, acá que realmente casi 60% de los residentes de Napa, de la ciudad de Napa, eh, son constituentes del condado también y que los distritos del condado están configurados de una forma tal que los supervisores del condado representan una porción de la ciudad de Napa. Entonces la pregunta es, ¿por qué la ciudad y el condado, eh, que controlan básicamente la mitad del, de la, eh, tierra de la, de la, los lotes públicos en el centro de Napa, ¿por qué mejor no colaboran y juntas los poderes?, por falta de mejor palabra, eh, para preparar un plan que sea más a largo plazo para las, eh, las facilidades de ambos, eh, de la ciudad y el condado? Y la respuesta es que obviamente sí, la ciudad y el condado trabajan juntos en cada oportunidad que pueden para este proyecto también. Lo que pasa es que no hubo realmente una oportunidad en la que tuvieran algo, eh, que realmente pudieran ayudarse el uno, el uno al otro en términos de los edificios que estamos hablando, por lo menos para la fase uno. Ahora, si posiblemente se deshacen del, el Salón de la Justicia o de uno de los otros edificios, quizás esa sí sería una conversación con la ciudad y ver cómo podrían ayudarse el uno al otro.
Great. I'd also like to add that, you know, in, in projecting the space needs that formed the basis of our options, right? We were looking at the, um, each department, uh, their current headcount and expected future growth over the next 15 years. Um, so at the very least, um, the options that we have, um, are meant to accommodate, um, the county's, um, the county's, um, operations up to that point. But really, um, this, a, a plan like this is meant to set a framework, um, that can be valid over, you know, a much longer period of, let's say, 30 years. Um, which is why, like Steve said upfront, everything that we're doing is fairly high level. Um, you know, no building design will come out of this study. It's really looking at overall, what are the county's space needs? Um, can they be accommodated, um, where they currently are, where are some other places those needs could be accommodated? Um, and also what makes the most sense given, um, given this, uh, what county residents need and, um, and, um, what kind of services the county is going to deliver, so.
Okay, supongo traducir lo que dijo mi compañero Eric, es, eh, recordar a todos que esto es un proceso a largo plazo. Eh, realmente, eh, el, el plan es entender cómo se puede organizar las facilidades del condado sobre los próximos 30 a 50 años. Estas inversiones son obviamente mucho dinero y no es para hacer algo, eh, que solo vaya a ayudar con los, con las, eh, necesidades inmediatas sino con las necesidades realmente a largo plazo.
Great, thanks. Uh, next question. Are EV charging stations going to be a part of the South Campus development if it moves forward? Um, and then there's a follow-up from Patrick Marino that says, and if so, how large scale, given the rise of EV hours? So EV charging is definitely something that, um, is, um, uh, you know, recognized as, as a, as a future need. But I would say that whether or not the county installs chargers is, um, a bit outside of the scope of, uh, this particular project.
Eric, I can, I can still answer that.
Okay.
Actually, the, the answer is we'll be doing EV charging stations at South Campus, whether this goes forward or not. Uh, we're currently installing 10 charging stations in the Fifth, Fifth Street Garage. And, um, although we don't have anything on the books right now, I fully expect, um, the next EV project will be adding stations at South Campus. And I'm perfectly willing to say I have no idea how many there will be. But, uh, um, obviously, it's a thing that's coming and we'll, we'll be doing that, uh, um, independent of what the board ends up deciding on this, this overall process.
Esta pregunta tenía que ver con estaciones para cargar vehículos eléctricos y si esto va a ser parte del desarrollo del campus del sur, si, si esta opción sigue adelante. Y la respuesta es que, eh, o sea, sí, el, el condado está mirando en agregar más estaciones de, para cargar autos eléctricos. Incluso en este momento están construyendo más en el aparcamiento del edificio seis, me parece, eh, y en otros lugares. Pero sí es algo que el condado está mirando, no saben cuántas estaciones te, para, para, para cargar vehículos, pero sí más.
All right, so that was actually the last of our questions. Um, well, if there are no more questions, we could conclude a little bit early. Um, hang out for another minute just to see if anything else comes through.
And if there's someone who has their hand raised, um, they can't, eh, relieve, um, the only way for us to interact is with the chat or with the Q and A. Um, so if you could please post your question on the Q and A, that would be great. Si alguien tiene su mano levantada y quiere hacer alguna pregunta, eh, por favor, si la pueden escribir en el chat o en el Q and A, eh, sería mejor.
Like we had one additional question come in from Linda. Uh, Linda asks, where will the funds come from? Steve?
That's a Becky question.
All right. Sorry, Becky.
That's okay.
Hi again. Yes, we are very cognizant that funding will be necessary for any of the options selected by the Board of Supervisors moving forward, and cost estimates will be provided for those at that time. Um, for each of the scenarios that have been provided, Gensler's team, um, will be making estimates. That is still in process right now, so we do not have those estimates at this time. We do know that we will have some cash accumulation to be able to pay for a portion of projects. And then that debt issuance would be necessary for any balance of a project. But we don't know what that scope will look like until there's further analysis and discussion.
La pregunta es si, eh, que, cuál es el costo, eh, de, de, perdón, no de cuál es el costo, sino de dónde van a salir los fondos para, para todo esto. Y, eh, obviamente, eh, lo que nos está diciendo Becky es que, eh, todo esto sí se sabe que va a costar, pero estamos en el proceso realmente de saber cuánto, eh, va a costar para entonces saber cómo, eh, alocar los, los fondos del condado. Nosotros en el grupo de mi oficina de Gensler estamos ayudando al condado en obtener los costos preliminares para cada una de las opciones, para que se pueda hacer una informa-, una decisión informada acerca de la mejor opción.
Cool. Thank you for that. Um, let's see, we have a question about South Campus. So the South Campus buildings are ready for use to consolidate or is further development needed to add more space? Um, I can take that unless, um, Steve or Becky, you're dying to. Okay, so, um, with South Campus, um, so it depends on the option, um, if the short answer is your question. But, um, under the option where there's a full consolidation, um, of county's, uh, of the county's, um, operations to South Campus, that would require an additional new building to be built. Um, but in the other, in the partial option, uh, partial consolidation option, that wouldn't require a new building since we're, you know, retaining some of the others. Um, but because building four, you know, it used to be, uh, part of a pharmaceutical company, um, and a lot of the space is not quite ready to be occupied by office users. Um, so there would need to be some amount of investment to convert that space. Um, and to also perform any kind of hazardous material abatement or any type of, you know, uh, any type of prep work like that before it can be occupied.
Okay, eh, la pregunta es si los edificios del campus sur están listos para ser consolidados o para, eh, poder usarlos como presentamos en estas opciones o si necesi-, se necesita, eh, añadir más espacio. Eh, y realmente la respuesta es que depende de la opción. En la opción número tres, eh, donde estamos, eh, una, haciendo, proponiendo una consolidación total del campus sur, aquí sí necesitaríamos construir más. Pero en la opción número cuatro, donde es más bien, eh, una, es una división entre el campus sur y el centro, aquí solo sería renovar.
Cool. Thank you for that. Uh, next question is from Ryan Melendez. Um, to promote commuting by bike slash walking locker room slash showers be included in renovation slash new buildings. Steve?
Yeah, um, again, a, a way too early question, but, but the basic answer is yes. Um, the, um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. The basic answer is yes. That's already been discussed with a couple of, um, um, as a need by as a need by several departments and I'm very much assuming the board will be supportive of that.
Esta pregunta tiene que ver con la idea de que para promover, que la gente llegue al condado por medio de bicicletas o caminando, si van a proporcionar lockers o también bañeras, duchas, mejor dicho, de si serían incluidas en las renovaciones o en los edificios nuevos, y la respuesta corta es que sí. Eso es algo que definitivamente el condado está considerando.
Awesome. Next question. How will any slash all projects work towards Napa County's climate action goals? Divestment from natural gas, heat pumps, solar and battery, water conservation, et cetera?
So Eric, I'll take that. Thank you. Thank you, David, for the question. That very question we were discussing with our architectural team just last week. And basically, all options for how to power these buildings will be analyzed and costed and then ultimately the board will make the decision. But we are, particularly for the office-only functions, there could well be opportunity for an all-electric building. Solar is certainly a possibility, solar plus battery. Again, possible, particularly given that we want these buildings to operate under duress, if you will, you know, be operational in disasters and whatnot. So, you know, can't guarantee an answer at this point, but it's absolutely on the table. And Eric, I'll toss it back to you. I think you wanted to add a little bit.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, as part of, you know, our research for the cost estimates, we have been looking at cost premiums that are associated with going all electric, specifically office buildings. So, yes, that's, you know, things like this are definitely part of the discussion. Although, you know, like I said previously about some of the more specific or more detailed asks, you know, we're not going so far as to specify in particular, you know, solutions for specific buildings, so.
Pues esta pregunta tiene que ver con si estos proyectos nuevos van a considerar los los objetivos de acción climática del condado y como por ejemplo invertir en guiar el gas natural, el metano, le decimos desinversión más o menos, bobas calor, heat pumps, energía solar o de batería, conservación de agua, etcétera. Y la respuesta es que, bueno, primero que todo todavía estamos en procesos muy, vamos a decir, muy temprano para decidir qué tipo de diseño se va a hacer para poder llegar a los goles climáticos. Pero de que se está pensando en esa dirección sí, sobre todo con lo que tiene que ver con baterías y con energía solar.
Great, thank you. It's Linda again with a follow-up to her previous question. She says, she writes, as a follow-up on the funding, I was asking if funding would come from some sort of taxes or a municipal bond or another source like matching with state or federal, more specifics on sources.
I apologize for not explaining that further. While I do expect cash to be the first funding source, I did mention debt and the debt would most likely be certificates of participation, which is a municipal bond option. And it would not have an expectation to have any tax increase. It would be structured for the payments to be absorbed within the annual operations as well as no expectation from any other entities participating in the event.
Thanks, Becky. Esta pregunta tiene que ver como seguimiento a la pregunta anterior de de dónde van a venir los fondos y si van a venir de algún tipo de impuesto o de algún bono municipal o otro tipo de fuente como una contrapartida o algo que tenga que ver con el estado o con el gobierno federal. Y nos dice Becky que sí hay parte que viene de los bonos municipales. Hay otra parte que tiene que ver con deuda pero que no hay planes de, o sea, esa deuda sería absorbida internamente sin planes de añadir impuestos por ningún lado, o sea, que no, no se está planeando subir los impuestos para este proyecto.
Well, thank you for the follow-up question, Linda. So that was the last of the second set. Hang tight for another couple minutes to see if any other questions come through. All right. Very specific question.
We got one more.
Yeah, well, will the locker rooms and showers be open to the public as well?
Way too early question. No idea.
Esta pregunta tiene que ver si los, si la idea de hacer locker rooms o perdón, habitaciones para cambiarse, para los que vienen en bicicleta o duchas, si estas estarían también abiertas para el público porque anteriormente la respuesta es más bien para, fue más bien para los empleados, debía haber clarificado. Y la respuesta de la pregunta ahora es que no se sabe, que todavía estamos en una etapa muy temprana para saber.
So we give it until seven twenty and then all night? Okay. So. I'm just gonna do a quick recap of next steps to kind of close things out. So like I said at the beginning of the meeting, following this virtual town hall, we'll be compiling all the feedback that we received, taking that into consideration as we find these preliminary options that we reviewed with you tonight. Eventually, we will need to come to the board with a recommendation for a preferred option. You know, and then from after getting their feedback on the ultimate direction that they want to go in, we'll be able to wrap up our final facilities master plan report along with the implementation guide that outlines, you know, the rough steps that the county will need to take in order to, in order to bring all of the, you know, plan recommendations to life. And like Becky mentioned, you know, before any kind of new building gets built, there will be a much more detailed, you know, design development process during which there will be more opportunities for the community to provide feedback on, you know, for those specific projects.
Acá ya casi estamos terminando, ya vamos a cerrar. Antes de cerrar queríamos solo dejarles saber cuáles son los próximos pasos. Como mencionamos antes, aquí estamos en la fase del desarrollo de opciones y ahora nos toca poner las opciones juntas, terminar los costos, analizar los findings, lo que encontremos y con eso tendríamos que ir al consejo con una opción que sería la preferida y o la recomendada. Y primero es simplemente un boceto y luego finalmente la opción final. Ahora, como dijo Becky anteriormente, esto no tiene nada que ver con edificios todavía. Esto es simplemente un boceto al nivel del master plan, muy a nivel alto. Ya si al final se decide hacer algún edificio nuevo, van a haber muchas más oportunidades para todo el público para que nos puedan dar su opinión y dónde realmente van a mirar ya las cosas con más detalles, como las preguntas que tienen que ver con las duchas, etcétera, y cómo se miran los edificios y todo eso, pero ahora solo muy a nivel alto. Y eso es todo por hoy.
All right, so. With that, that concludes our virtual town hall for tonight. Thank you again, everybody, for taking the time to attend and for all the questions and feedback that you provided. And also thank you to our partners of the county, Steve, Becky, appreciate it. And, yeah, we will be, we will be eventually issuing the final report and looking forward to looking forward to pushing that along in early next year.
Muchas gracias a todos y gracias a nuestros representantes del condado, Stephen y Becky. Nosotros, como mencionamos, vamos a hacer el reporte final y pasar a hacerlo al condado para que puedan presentárselo a el consejo. Gracias a todos y que pasen muy buenas noches.
All right, good night, everybody.